Would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a vision of justice for all.
Okay, Ginny, please take the role. Collins here. Coyle here. Liker.
Here.
Lee.
There.
Cantress.
Here.
Yusuf Abramson.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
Okay. We will start with our favorite category on the agenda. This is 207's best, and tonight, the area of expertise and excellence is career exploration. So are we all ready? We have, okay. We're gonna go ahead and start with Maine-South, Dr. Sauer.
All right, thank you very much. Evan, if you would, please. Stand right here. So on behalf of the staff at Maine-South High School, we are pleased to recognize Evan Sauer as one of 207's best in the area of career exploration. His family's here and some of our staff is here as well. If you would mind. From an early age, Evan has always been interested in the idea of studying law, to be an advocate for others, to stand up for important issues, and to uphold the truth and ideas he is motivated by. For him, it is a field that not only aligns with his passion for language and communication, but offers a platform for creating meaningful change. Evan's attributes, attributes, his interest in law to his experiences in AP English, Government, and Social Science classes. Additionally, Evan expresses an interest in film. He has pursuits to study cinematography, to tell nuanced stories in creative and visually appealing ways. This passion has led him to an internship at District 207 Offices as a student videographer and to become a member of WMTHTV, Maine-South Student Film Television Production Club. His curiosity and willingness to explore his passions continue to shape his journey. Alongside these interests, Evan is a member of the Boys' Varsity Cross Country Team, a co-president for Maine-South Book Club, and a science of suicide student leader. He is a member of the Honors Societies for the International Thespiums, Triad of Music, French, and Social Science. Evan has also been recognized for accolades such as a commended student of the National Merit Scholarship Program, the IHSA Scholastic Achievement Award recipient, and the Illinois Central Suburban League Scholar-Athlete. Now to help highlight Evan's successes, Catherine Schroeder, ACTE and internship coordinator, stated, "I'm so glad to hear Evan Sauer has won the award of D-207's Best in Career Exploration. Evan is so dedicated, capable, and mature when it comes to his career exploration. We placed him with our D-207 Coordinator of Digital Media in an internship role supporting Maine Township videography and production. His assignment was to create a public service announcement for Maine-South students regarding the importance of attendance in schools. Throughout his work on this project, Evan has demonstrated proper workplace behavior and exemplified to his peers a professional work ethic. He is a team player and genuinely cares about the people he interacts with and works with. Evan has identified both personal and professional goals, made an action plan for them, and has executed that in the, in the, his plan in a timely manner. He sets realistic expectations for his internship and applies technical critical thinking and problem-solving skills to all elements of the project in order to meet and beat expectations. He's engaging in professional networking at a young age and has really started to lay the groundwork for his successful career in the future. I can't wait to see the great work Evan does in the future." Christine Headley, his AP English teacher, added, "When I received the emails saying that Evan has been chosen as one of 207's best, I was not surprised. When I read that he was being identified as one of our best with a focus on career exploration, I had one immediate thought and appealed to the future. I thought, please let Evan stop exploring careers and decide to become a high school English teacher.[253.70][253.70](Laughter). He would be amazing in the classroom, and his students would be so lucky to have him as their teacher. I recognize that as his current AP English teacher, this wish was well-intentioned but selfish, with selfish motives. It would make me happy to know that the future of the teaching profession would be strengthened by the addition of someone of Evan's caliber. He has immense intelligence, kindness, wisdom, and positive energy. But here's the catch. I have a suspicion that every adult who's lucky enough to work with Evan has the exact same thought and wish that I have. Every adult who knows Evan and must acknowledge that he would make a remarkable addition to any area of study and career path that he chooses to pursue. Overall, I'm excited for him to receive this well-deserved honor. I know that Evan's continued exploration of possible careers of all his future opportunities in fact will be done with integrity, hope, and purpose." There's more. Oh.[309.61][309.61](Laughter). Mason Strom, a radio TV broadcasting teacher, stated, "Over the past three years, I've had the privilege of teaching Evan in both my radio and TV production class and advanced TV and film production classes, witnessing his remarkable growth and dedication to the craft of filmmaking. Evan's journey as my student has been nothing short of impressive. His mild curiosity for filmmaking blossomed into a true passion, and I've had the privilege of observing this transformation firsthand. Through our time together, we have come to understand not only his talents but also the depth of his commitment to his studies. One particular lesson that stands out in Evan's educational journey with me was the After Effects unit in Advanced TV and Film, in Film One. This unit introduced him to a new program expanding his capabilities as an editor and content creator. Evan's enthusiasm and quick grasp of the material were commendable, and he demonstrated a level of proficiency that surpassed expectations. Additionally, one aspect Evan may not be aware of is the profound impact he has had on his peers through his leadership and independence. Evan's initiative and willingness to step up as a resource for his peers is indicative of his natural leadership abilities. I wholeheartedly endorse Evan Sauer and believe that he has the potential to make a significant impact in the world of film." Dan Cohen, his internship sponsor, added that Evan is, is a District 207 Communications Video Intern who has shown exceptional professional qualities that extend well beyond his life experience on top of being a talented student filmmaker. His upbeat attitude, thorough approach, and work ethic will serve him well after graduation and on to his career. Trevor Fitz, a social science teacher, shared, "I have the opportunity to have Evan this year in AP Psych and, as well as working with him during the video project. Evan is mature beyond his years in the classroom. Evan is a leader who is phenomenal at asking follow-up questions and showing genuine interest in other people's perspectives. And while he was working on a short movie, I was extremely impressed by his organization and follow-through." Terry Knight, an English teacher, said, "Kudos to Evan Sauer, an incredible and thoughtful student. During discussions in AP Language and Composition, he enjoyed exploring complex relationships among characters and themes. Often during a discussion, Evan would sit quietly for a little while, observing and taking mental notes. Eventually, he would join the conversation in the most wonderful way, pulling together seemingly disparate ideas from one or two classmates, and then finally drawing his own succinct conclusion." Lastly, Jay Gregg-Nordahl, his cross-country coach, shared, "Evan Sauer has been a very supportive member of the Boys' Cross Country Team over these four years. He is a great teammate and a dedicated athlete. In the past season, he made a wonderful film of the team and his teammates that helped to bring the sport and unique challenges to the visual medium of video. Whether he chooses to pursue, pursue a career in law or film, Evan certainly has our future ahead. He has every confidence that his resident character of creativity and drive will lead him to a positive change, or to a positive change. Congratulations, Evan."[499.12][499.12](Applause). So Evan, if you wouldn't mind, if you could introduce who's here with you and also your plans for the future. See if I can write.
So tonight, my dad and my mom are here with me. Hi.[516.66][516.66](Laughter). And as for the future, I think your letter kind of hit the nail on the head. It's either gonna be undergrad political science and then going into a law career, or it's gonna be filmmaking.
Excellent. Yeah.
Great.
And then, remember?
Hi, Evan.
Hi.
Hi. Good to see you. And then, the lawyer.
Oh, really? You can do both.[540.79][540.79](Laughter). You can do both, though.
Yes.
Congratulations.[552.79][552.79](Applause).
Next up is Maine East, Dr. Pyke.
All right, thank you so much. Zunay, you wanna join us up front here? I am proud to share with you Maine East 207's Best winner for this month, Zunay Sami. Zunay is a great example of a student that's used his resources well at Maine East and has excelled in each area that he has explored. While we don't always expect each student to have a perfect plan carved out by senior year, we do hope that students are able to make informed decisions based on their experiences, and Zunay has done just that. Because of his commitment to exploring his future career paths, Zunay knew early on that in his high school journey that his interests fell with both computer science and healthcare. So Zunay credits his mother's influence through her work as a nurse for inspiring him to learn about the human body. Zunay has participated in a number of school clubs to not only explore healthcare as he does in the Healthcare Organization for Students of America, but also to serve others while both bolstering his leadership skills as he has in the South Asian Student Association, KIVA, a local chapter of the National Club to expand financial access to help underserved communities thrive throughout the world, the Muslim Student Association, and the LENS Yearbook, as well as keeping his mind and body strong and wrestling. Coursework has always been a key career exploration component. Although Zunay is still a high school student, he's already flexing his post-secondary muscles not only by enrolling in a great many advanced placement courses, healthcare-related dual credit courses, and being recognized as a president scholar, but also has participated in the Harvard Summer Pre-Med Program. Zunay participated in the D-207 Healthcare Career Night that started with listening to a panel of medical professionals, who then ate dinner with our students for a networking opportunity, followed by a career trek to Lutheran General Hospital to visit almost 60 booths representing a wide variety of medical professions. Right now, Zunay is patiently waiting to hear who he will be placed with to host him for a four-day shadowing opportunity where he will follow a surgeon wherever he or she goes, including observing surgeries to further hone his healthcare interest. Zunay's zesp for learning is felt by his teachers and peers as well. Mr. Shakoda shared that, "Zunay does a great job of seeing things in different perspectives. I think this is why he does so well working with others. He celebrates all of his peers' contributions to group work and respects their opinions and evaluations of the products he produces. Zunay brings great energy and enthusiasm every day to class. He definitely plays the role of promoter in his groups. All of his groups are filled with conversation and energy but still able to complete the tasks at hand. I do not have to worry about who Zunay works with because he's so welcoming and is able to work well with all of his peers." Mr. Eller shared, "It's been a pleasure to have Zunay in my calculus class this year. His personality shines through every day and always brings a smile and a funny word to my class. I don't think he realizes how much I appreciate his sense of humor and his willingness to work with his partner to learn difficult math concepts in A/B calculus. While I'm sure he love, does not love calculus as much as I do, he is always willing to try and do his best. For that, I am truly thankful. I have no doubt in my mind that Zunay is going on to bigger and better things after he leaves Maine East, and I consider myself fortunate to have had him in class." Mr. Greenwald shared that, "Zunay has a true passion and enjoyment for learning which is infectious with his peers. In cybersecurity and robotics, multiple students wanted to be lab partners with Zunay. He attacks our challenges in robotics, coding, and cybersecurity. He loved to solve problems and understand why solutions worked and failed. Often, he found tons of useful information from his failures." Ms. Block, Zunay's counselor, shared that, "Through my interactions with Zunay, I have been consistently impressed by his curiosity and enthusiasm for delving into as many areas of interest. Zunay has taken a proactive approach to gaining practical experience by eagerly seeking out opportunities offered through our integrated career services, selecting courses where he can explore career passions by engaging in hands-on activities and participating in related extracurricular activities. These examples speak volumes about Zunay's passion to align himself with a career that matches his interests, aptitude, and abilities. I have no doubt that Zunay possesses the qualities necessary to excel in any endeavor he pursues within the healthcare field or any other pathway he may choose. Thank you so much, Zunay, for sharing your talents with Maine East. We wish you the very best in what we know will be a wonderfully successful career."[828.82][828.82](Applause).
Zunay, will you share with us who's here with you tonight and a little bit about your next steps?
All right, so today I have my mom and my dad here with me, and for my next steps, I'm looking to major in Biology or Psychology as well as minor in Computer Science. I'm not quite sure where I'm gonna go yet, but I do have a couple options like Northwestern, DePaul, and U S D.
Great. Thanks, Zunay. Okay. Last but certainly not least, Maine West, Dr. Mann. Caitlin Dahl, come on down.
So at the beginning of the school year, when Caitlin looked at her schedule, she noticed that her even days seemed lighter than her odd days. She's doubled up in math, both are on odd days, and two of her APs are on odd days, but her health and wellness in our class are on even days. So she told me she thought she would probably look forward to the even days so that she would have a little more breathing room in her week. But as the year went on, she found that she really looked forward to the odd days more because she loves to push herself and discovered that the more she has on her plate, the better. She loves learning, she told me, so the odd days end up being kind of refreshing in their own way. And the more we talked, the more I realized that that story actually captures something important about Caitlin, that she seeks out and embraces new knowledge, not just about her classes, but about the world and about herself. And that's, that's the spirit that drove her to take on such a thorough and open process in exploring her career possibilities. She started out very interested in medicine. As a junior, she interviewed an athletic training, an athletic trainer, and ruled out athletic training. She thought she might like research more than practice and thought about making a global impact, so then she shadowed a sleep researcher and then wondered what it would be like to work in a lab all day. She started thinking about environmental work, becoming very interested in water and energy policy. She's about to start a job shadow at GIS Energy, did I get that right?
Yeah.
And has applied for a summer internship at Argonne, and her career exploration experiences dovetail perfectly with her AP Environmental Science class, in which she's also learned about food engineering, again with the hopes of having a worldwide, worldwide impact. So next year, she hopes to major in Environmental Engineering and learn more about water, energy, air pollution, and power. She's uncovered a lot of possibilities, and just like with her schedule, she's happier with more than with less. Her characteristic openness is visible in just about everything she does at school. Her community matters to her, and she leans into opportunities to make a difference. She was a driving force behind our first-ever Girls' Flag Football Team, sending emails and recruiting and getting to know a lot of girls she didn't know before, and leading the team as a wide receiver and backup quarterback. Now, I feel like I owe it to Caitlin to highlight her signature play, because I would want someone to do that if it were my play. So do you remember the down in the distance? That would add a little more.
The down in the distance?
Yeah. What was it?
So it was basically, um, the quarterback would snap the ball, and then I would, I'm sorry, wait.
What down was, do you remember what down was? Were you like third, third and, say it was third and 10.
Oh, for powder puff.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, so yeah, I was running back for powder puff. She snapped the ball, I went to the right side of the field, I got all the juniors on the right side, and then I circled back and came on to the left side and scored a touch.[1047.11][1047.11](Laughter).
So you didn't just score a touch, she went the length of the field to score. Everyone's trailing behind her, the crowd's going nuts, and all her teammates mobbed her in the end zone, and there's a great photo and a sideline interview on Instagram. I kinda like that when I asked you about your highlights of your Maine West experience, that was one of those things that you cited, and it kind of speaks to a lot, right? You mobilize peers, you build relationships with the adults to create something new, you put in the work, you led by example, you changed the play's direction and blazed a path to success with your community cheering you on. So Caitlin loves the Maine West moments when everyone is together, and throughout her time here, she's always been a part of the team. Volleyball, basketball, softball, flag football, link crew, environmental awareness club, Student Voice Committee, Class Council, National Honor Society, Warrior Athletics Players Association, and Skills USA, where she is helping to design and build variations on a prosthetic arm. She gives to her community through volunteering and always seems to be filling her busy days with things that make the most impact. And when she's not starting new teams or building arms, she will take time for the simple joy of playing basketball or throwing a football with her younger brother. Caitlin's strong relationships with teachers have helped them to really get why she's special as well. Ms. Murray recalled, "Caitlin took AP Human Geography during our COVID year, and there was never a doubt as to her interest in learning and her engagement with the ideas and materials we were working with." Fitting with her recognition for career exploration, Caitlin was one of the students who could best apply the bigger picture in geography, moving comfortably between examining patterns at a global scale and the ways they affect her at the local level as an individual. Mr. Walsh also agrees with this award's fit. "The whole broad concept of exploration fits Caitlin perfectly. Caitlin possesses, like any great explorer and more than just about any student in recent memory, a subtle fearlessness that can't be taught and which fuels her success in ways that are more and less obvious. If she has an idea that does not neatly fit the conventional wisdom being shared in class, she will share it where others would keep such a thought to themselves, and we all grow as a result of it. Beyond the classroom, she saw a void in opportunities for Girls' Flag Football at Maine West, so she did the legwork to launch the program herself, giving dozens of girls here the chance to compete and excel on a field that would have been otherwise empty and silent. We have all benefited from her courage and her willingness to explore. How can anyone do better than that? Plus, she is hilarious, but should also win her award."[1192.75][1192.75](Laughter). Mr. Weber is Caitlin's Class Council sponsor and powder puff football coach. "Caitlin is awesome. I have been lucky enough to meet Caitlin through powder puff football and Class Council Student Voice. Caitlin is the only senior I have who has been at every Student Voice Class Council meeting this year. She contributes, comes up with great ideas, and is always willing to go above and beyond. If she has a task, I know what will be done and done well. On top of Caitlin's hard work, she gets along well with everyone and has great insight on the senior class." Ms. Reiken has loved to witness Caitlin firsthand Caitlin's mature approach to exploring both career and academic learning. "I have the privilege of having Caitlin in my AP Environmental Science course. One of Caitlin's most commendable attributes is her willingness to seek assistance and ask questions when faced with challenges. She approaches obstacles with a proactive mindset, recognizing the importance of continuous learning and growth. Her academic record characterized by mostly straight A's reflects her intellectual excellence and commitment to academic excellence. She makes great connections between the course material and her experiences and is applying for her internship at the College Bound Research Program. Her desire to learn and pursue learning experiences to refine her career path is so commendable. And I just wanna close by sharing how much I enjoy the opportunity to spend time with Caitlin and learn about the impact she's had upon her teachers and peers. And despite my disagreement with your take on the Bears' first draft pick, it is an honor to have Caitlin Dahl today."[1278.21][1278.21](Applause).
Caitlin, can you introduce who's here with you tonight?
Yeah, I'm here with my dad, my mom, and my younger brother, who's going to be starting at Maine West next year.
All right. Bring it. And do you have plans for next year?
Yeah, so I'm looking at a four-year university. I'm undecided as of right now, but I will be studying Environmental Engineering.
That's great.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You're awesome. Well, congratulations again to our amazing students, and thank you to their parents for all they did to help them get to this point, and their friends and family, other family members. This is your opportunity to step outside and have a photo taken with your principal, and we'll continue the meeting. You're welcome to join again if you'd like, but don't feel you need to.
It's a great opportunity. It's universal. Universal.
It's not media, it's something.
You didn't hear it?
Because I'm too focused. Okay. That is not supposed to be put on. Sorry, I thought I missed something about the, you know, the draft. Okay. Okay, are there any public comments? Is there, are there any cards there? I can't tell. Nope. Okay. Update from superintendent?
Just, first of all, this is one of my, one of my favorite student of the month presentations, as everybody knows. Dr. Cook, who is the director of our program, can't be with us tonight, and she emailed, she is driving eight students to the plumbers union. She has developed, she and our dean, has developed the bridge program, and so she's driving eight juniors who will be looking at the ability to begin apprenticeships next year. It's, it's almost unprecedented. It's really, really hard to build programs and pipelines to our unions in this country, and our team has done a really, really good job of really interfacing with the trades. But it also illustrates a problem that I've talked about before. Laura Cook is driving our kids to the, to the plumbing apprenticeship tonight, the director of our program. Now, that speaks to who she is and, and what she's about, but this transportation issue for getting our kids, it is a major issue in and of itself, but it's a major equity issue as well. So it's just something that I would remind the board, remind Tatianna, solve that problem, okay? And, because we, we can't have the effect of these programs and leverage our business partners if we can't get kids out in the field where they need to be. So that is it for me this evening.
Okay. Any updates from board members? Ginny?
I do. Thank you. I wanna share some of the event that I was able to attend, attending the COSCASPA this year, Consortium of State School Board Association. This year was held at the Dennis Texas. This is their second year of hosting it. It's steady, but slowly it's getting better and better, but I think it does take some other time. But from, many members from IASB attended, a dozen or so, including, we have about, they're saying about seventy-five from Illinois school districts also able to attend from many different areas, including Laiden Township to 122. So I was kinda looking for, checking out their badges to see if the latest, I wanna brag it over, say, hey, we had just hired, you know, your students.
Hopefully you didn't find them.
I could find them. I could find them, yeah, I could find them.
They saw you coming, Ginny.
Sorry. But overall, what was it? So this is their second year, so it was operated by eighteen months or so. This year, there were about a total of fourteen thirty-eight people attended. And as we all know, state of Illinois, we have about eight hundred fifty school districts overall, and nationwide, we have elected school board member of about ninety-five thousand people. So, and the program wise, they have, they, the topics from what they cover, the major items were school safeties, and then recreational equities, and then also AIs. So they concentrate that a lot, you know, the pros and cons and all the other things. Currently, there are about twenty-five states or members of COSPRA, and they're looking for more, hopefully. And the next year, they, we got the date, next year, it will be held at Atlanta, Georgia from March twenty-one through twenty-three, in Hilton Atlanta. The Business Expo, I'm also interested, you know, meeting with various people and so on, because they have many different programs, projects, architects, and all the other things. But because this is new compared to NSBA, when we normally go, it's about seven thousand people attend, and then probably about a couple thousand, the vendors are attending the Business Expo. This one, probably about thirty or so, so there's still a long way to go. But whatever the reason, hopefully, if opportunity comes, I hope the, and this was also shared by many other participants, so they're, want to see that NSBA and COSPRA can come together and having one nice, you know, national event, that sort of stuff. So we'll see what happens. But meeting a lot of people, sharing a lot of information, like, what do you do in your district? You know, they say, oh, I'm having a superintendent, I'm doing this, I'm doing that. They have a referendum coming, you know, so we exchange our ideas and information and so on, and really learning so much about through attending that. So I would highly recommend, hopefully next year, you will be able to join Atlanta, Georgia for the year 2025, so that we can also show our support as well. All right? So that's my report for today.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ginny, for attending. Anyone else?
Yeah, hi. So last month, on February sixth, we had, did a presentation for the Park Ridge Health Commission, and we had Officer Carlos Panizo with us, and also the group of, a club from Maine-South, which was the Boost Club, and we did a presentation on vaping for the community. And it was very well attended, and a lot of parents were interested in it.
Was it, I'm sorry, was this, when you say we, was it, who did it?
Oh, I, I did the presentation.
Okay, as yourself, in the cap?
No, I just... No, I just did it.
No, just you did it, okay.
Yeah, I did it myself, but I was, I wanted to get exposure for the Boost Club from Main South because it's a new club this year. And they're working on drug, anti-drug or drug prevention for within Main South. So I told them I would do whatever I could to help them. And it was great because they got up and they were part of the panel and they did a great job of really very good. And so I'm happy that the club is starting and they're going to be doing freshman like encounters or whatever, what's it called, when they do the freshman in the?
Orientation?
No, in the, in the homeroom.
The advisories.
Advisories, yeah, they're going to be going around to, I guess, the freshman advisories and talking to kids about drugs and all that stuff. So I, and I just, the thing is that if, we need to have more awareness. That's, we still need to have more of that going on. It's, it's something that's, I think, really, it's still a big problem. We don't see it so much, you know, every day, but it's, it's a big problem. And whatever you can do individually or as a group or at a school or whatever, I cannot emphasize the effort, it just has to be put in. And I'm happy to help anybody who needs me, I'm happy to help them. But I just think that we can't, it clear, it was clear to me from the parents who were there and asking the questions that were there, there's just still so much stuff. And it's not just vaping, it's all of the drugs that are going on for teenagers. And it seems like, you know, we go through fluctuations, high-low, high-low. You know, all of a sudden, it's a big problem because somebody from our school got it and then, you know, nobody, then it's quiet, then high, then low. And we, we can't do that. I mean, we really, as a society and as our, as Main Township, I think we need to really put an effort there.
And Boost is only at Main South, did you say?
Boost is only at Main South.
Are there similar organizations at East or West?
Yeah, well, I mean, it was a student propose club, so, I mean, if, if anybody wanted to start one, I'm happy to help the other schools too.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Do you also recognize, tell the comments about that receiving an award?
I know we said something that maybe it was.
From last month, I saw that in a journal topic, I don't know about two weeks ago, so I don't think we officially did.
But I think we did it at a committee meeting, I think we did it by a little committee meeting. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
You get so many awards. Kind of a star multiple times over.
But I already saw one, so.
Good job, Terry, always. Okay, anyone else? I do just want to mention the foundation fundraiser, just one more time. And I had to look up the date of it, it is on the seventeenth this year. So, April seventeenth, yes. And so if you're interested, if you wouldn't mind just letting Ginny know and we'll see if we can get a.
What's the time of that?
It's in the evening.
Five to seven.
It's like five to seven.
It's five to seven.
This time, location?
It's, I think, at the Fountain Loop, that's it, I almost said the Ritz, it's Fountain Loop. Okay, if there's nothing else, then we'll move on to the finance committee update.
Sure. Linda Coyle? Let's see, so Finance Committee was held on February twenty-sixth. Members present were myself and Sheila Joseph Abramson. The meeting was called order at five P M. and there were no public comments. There were only a couple items on the agenda. The first was employee wellness and biometric screening. The Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mary Kalu, updated the committee on the contract with Empower Health for this year's employee comprehensive biometric screenings. The wellness screenings are held during final exams week in May and are optional. Tests are a good indicator of health status and staff have made lifestyle changes due to test results. Per person cost of the screening is a hundred fifteen dollars and it is built into the medical premium cost. The next item that we discussed was the telephone service contract. The Technology Department received multiple quotes for telephone services and they selected Peerless Network for a three-year contract, monthly amount one thousand nine hundred ninety dollars or seventy-one thousand five hundred forty for three years. Peerless will deliver service, services with unlimited PRIs, primary rate interface circuits consolidated at East and South where our data centers are located, creating reliability and redundancy in the case of providers for power outages and serving district calls at all four building locations. This will save the district over a thousand dollars per month on telephone service bills. There was no further business and the meeting was adjourned at five oh seven P M.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the Buildings and Grounds Committee update.
Yeah, excuse me. The Buildings and Grounds meeting was held on February twenty-sixth and members present were myself, Linda Coyle, and Gin Lee. And meeting was called to order at five oh seven P M. No public comments. Were two items on the agenda. One was the twenty twenty-four Main West Athletic Entrance renovation. The Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Dave Alm, noticed, noted that as part of this twenty twenty-four summer project, the Main West Athletic Entrance is in need of replacement due to structural degradation. Five bids were submitted on February twelfth, twenty twenty-four and thoroughly scope reviewed. The district recommends approving a contract with D. Cursey in the amount of four hundred eighty-four thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars. D. Cursey is a local company. Second item on the agenda was twenty twenty-four Main East Auditorium Doors Replacement. Also identified for replacement as part of the summer projects is the Main East Auditorium Entrance as a result of age-related conditions. Five bids were received on February twelfth, twenty twenty-four and were scope reviewed. Reed Construction is the recommended contractor in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars base plus Alternative One for sidewalk replacement just outside the entrance in the amount of forty-four thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars. The addition of Alternate One puts the contract slightly over budget, but it is necessary due to sidewalk degradation. And if done at a later time, the new doors would have to be removed to replace the sidewalk during additional, adding additional cost. Being no further business, we adjourned the meeting at five thirteen P M.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the Policy Committee update.
Yes, thank you. Policy Committee meeting was held on February twenty-eighth. Member present, myself, and Dean Petrus, there. And we called the meeting to order at nine oh two A M. There was no public comments. We had a short agenda, but we did have a very detailed discussion lengthy time was held related to review of District Two oh seven policies. Assistant Superintendent for Business, Ms. Mary Klue, updated the committee on the changes to the Policy four dash three zero investment policy. School District eighty-six and North School I S C were added to the group of schools where the main township school trustees invest all the financial funds. Approximate annual fee for the investment service through the Township Treasurer, Mr. Tom Erbath, is a hundred twenty thousand dollars. The other policy change is the switch to standard and post global insurance for the bank financial information furnished to the F D I C. The district is happy with the conservative investments as a focus on stability and guaranteeing investment funds. The law dictates how and where we invest funds and meet state requirements for investments. Also, there was a single change to Policy four dash six zero purchase and contracts. The bidding threshold increased from twenty-five thousand dollars to thirty-five thousand dollars per state law. The district is required to post our contracts greater than twenty-five thousand dollars on our website. Policies four thirty and four sixty will go on for the first reading of March fourth today, Board of Education meeting. Also, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resource, Mr. George Daigers, ran through Policy seven six zero residency. Discussion was held on tuition payment by non-resident students whose parents or legal guardians demonstrate sufficient intent to establish residency within thirty calendar days of the first day of attendance. The upfront payment for the first thirty days is approximately about thirty-five hundred dollars payable by cashier's check. This policy was discussed at the next Policy Committee meeting. Also, Policy five dash two one zero professional personnel was reviewed. The I A S B press recommends changes outline the terms for which a teacher may resign during or outside of a school term. Further discussion will be held at the next Policy Committee meeting. So there'll be no further businesses withdrawn at Policy Committee meeting at ten nineteen A M.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to monthly status of finances. Terry?
In your board tech, it is the January financial statement. If you look fund by fund on the revenue side, we are in line with budget. The fund that I want to point out is the self-insurance fund where you can see that revenue is slightly up given past years. And that's really because of the half-month premium holiday we did in December instead of the full month, which we've done for the past two years, which is why you see a slight variance in that revenue percentage. On the expenditure side, the expenditures are within budget. If you look at like the variance in the transportation fund, that is really just on the timing of transportation bills. It's any given month will, they may be a couple weeks behind, so that will catch up by the end of the year. All the other funds are within the same percentages as previous years and we are within budget. If you remember, December, we presented the mid-year budget update, which showed that we anticipate a slight improvement in the budget for the end of fiscal year. I'll entertain any questions that anybody has in the January financial report.
Any questions? Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Mary. I see no instructional services, am I correct? Okay. Monthly update on FOIA requests.
For this month, they've either been responded to or been processed, been responded to. And Mr. Clark is reviewing, Vic Lebowski, however, to help him respond to one of those.
There's just inside joke there, I'm not going to ask about. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to board policies. This is a first reading tonight, which we kind of just had summarized. Anything else you want to add to that?
Both of my policies, so.
It's got him on there.
I think Member Lee did a really good job of summarizing the minor changes in both Policies four thirty and four sixty. These are minor changes, this is off the first reading. If any of the board members have questions on those policies, they can feel free to reach out to me.
Can I make a comment on that?
Of course.
You know, that, the meeting, the committee meeting we had the other day was so informative on the investment part of it that I almost think that if there's any way we could put like a page description or something like that for when new board members come, that would be such a huge addition to understanding it. Because, I mean, not many of us are investment bankers, I mean, I mean, like right here, I mean.
And I'm actually planning on taking a look at the twelve months and trying to figure out like a, where we have a smaller topic for the Finance Committee meeting and asking Tom Albeck, the Main Township Treasurer, to come in and do kind of a presentation. And then we can make that a standing annual thing. So that way, that would be a good way to, for when we get new board members.
He's been here, we've had him here before.
He's come in the past, yeah, a couple years, so I think it's time to bring him back out.
And I agree, I think it, I remember it, I remember it being helpful and, you know, he might have felt like he was on the spot a little bit, but, but that's our, you know, it's our job, kind of, to ask questions there. I mean, even if he couldn't, if he couldn't come, if we could get some kind of, I don't know, white paper or some kind of card, you know, that just kind of like captured what we talked about at the meeting the other day because, I don't know about you guys, but I was just, I learned so much the other day and I'd like to, you know, share that.
Do you have notes you can write up or something?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah. Okay, great. And George, I was calling on you, but I know I'll be calling on you next time because we're going to have another policy meeting, right, on the other ones. Okay, moving on to new textbooks, this is also a first reading. Sean?
So, thank you. So what you have there are new novel adoptions for English one and English three. You can see the titles there with summaries and rationale for their adoption. Have been answering questions.
Are there any questions on any of these?
Just quickly, I'm sure that this will be also covered on item number eleven, new course proposals too. But I personally will be very interested to learn more about how the system works basically from the like proposal summary, from the background information and others. So is it possible when, maybe you can share with me, you know, let me know, how, when new proposal, new textbook coming onboard, how we go by based on, I would like to learn more about that.
Is that something you'd like me to discuss now or?
No, no, it doesn't have to be, but it's a time comes.
Anytime you'd like to discuss, but if you have to do.
Thank you so very much because I'm sure many of these textbooks are traditionally and maybe using the, you know, publishing of whatever the books that we are using in, I guess, the state of Illinois Education Department. I don't know if they just mandated and/or if we are to use it our own, how that works.
The state of Illinois has amended curriculum that we have to at a minimum rate for all.
Okay, I think that's something for other states as well, like state of Florida mentioned.
That's pretty much the way it is, to my knowledge, in all states.
But I thought as per our district, independently, we could choose any textbook that we want based on, you know, whatever that is. Because I thought basically our different courses, English, world histories and all the other things, I'm sure we have updated and things have been changed based on our generation need to adopt and learn and so on. Maybe some of them is really old history and so on.
All of our textbooks now, almost every single one of them, is digital. And so they're updated in real time now because that's something that you can do. So it used to be typically a six-year textbook cycle. But even now, if you commit to six years, each year, the digital version is updated with whatever new information relates to that area of the world or that topic. So they're fairly up to date because the revision is very easy to do. You're not doing print runs anymore of updates.
Okay. May I just, very much?
I have a question on that. I know, Sean, you did, on the Saints of the Household, we referenced the book was selected in response to the Equity Audit. I was just kind of curious what the Equity Audit was, I don't recall that, and how, why that book and not the other ones were referenced for that.
I'll be honest, I'm not quite sure why that book was, had that reason for it. Because really, the Equity Audit wasn't anything we had done formally from an outside provider. It was an internal look at what are, in this particular case, the novels we are using? And do they resonate with the students who we teach? And so, not to skewer anyone's favorite book, but, you know, is it Huck Finn? Is it Catcher in the Rye? Or is it something that's more modern and updated with very similar themes? So that's really when we talk about the Equity Audit, when we were. So that's really when we talk about the Equity Audit, what we were looking at during the time.
All the books seemed interesting in their own way.
I liked their little reviews of the.
Yeah, I did too. No, that's helpful.
Well, you might get asked.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. That was first reading, so we'll be back to that next month. Okay, could I have a motion on the consent agenda, items 9A through F?
Sumo.
Second. Jenny, would you take the role?
Collins?
I'm.
Coyle?
I'm.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay, could I have a motion on item 10A? This is the Empower Health Wellness Green.
As indicated at the committee meeting report out, this is kind of an annual thing. I want to say we've probably been doing it for over 15 years. I think it's here.
About one, yeah.
Yeah. This year, the cost is $115. That's up $5 from last year's cost. Couple of years ago, we added the A1C, which is a better indication of your blood sugar level over time. And we did that in response to the number of pre-diabetic and diabetic members in the medical program. Empower's been with us for the last five years. They do a really good job. Our staff is very satisfied with their safety measures, their cleanliness and their responsiveness.
Any questions about this? Seems like an absolute good thing, so. Okay, would you take the role, Jenny?
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 10B? This is the Main West Athletic Entrance.
Sumo.
Second.
Multiple bids were received. The Kersey Construction was the lowest bidder at the amount of $184,132.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, would you take the role? Lee?
Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 10C? This is the Main East Auditorium Replacement.
We, Construction was also the little bidder. We are recommending also the acceptance of Alternate Number 1, which is to replace the concrete that is immediately adjacent to the entrance of the auditorium. There used to be outdoor walk-off mats, so that concrete is depressed about an inch and is a trip hazard. Replacing it now is beneficial, even though it puts the budget slightly greater than budget because the footings underneath that concrete are integrated to the building. So to do it at a later date, we would have to remove those doors and risk damaging the storefront that we just replaced.
Okay.
Mary, one other question on that is, is that entrance top going to be replaced too? You know, when you walk into the auditorium, the residential top, all of the top. There's like a little roof or awning over the thing.
Oh, no.
It's dented.
No, we were not, this is just the, I don't know.
The doors.
I shouldn't say that. I don't, I think, I don't know, I, I can't, I will get back to you in Friday night because I, I don't recall if the canopy is anchored into the brick, which is what I think it is. But if it would be, if it's attached to the storefront, it would be replaced. But I'm pretty sure that that is anchored into the brick. But I will get back to you in Friday night.
It's like rolled back and it just, I mean, it needs help.
Also, for the Main West and Main East, overall, are we pretty much on the level of the August construction progress process? Are we, we not missing anything or we not far behind anything related to contracts that we are miss, we not missing anything, right?
Well, I mean, and I think the principle is, well, we're going through the next five-year facilities master plan as we indicated during the construction. In order to just maintain our buildings, we should be spending between $7 and $10 million a year on upkeep. We have lots of roof, we have lots of concrete, lots of parking lot, lots of mechanical equipment. The list goes on and on. So just to maintain our buildings, we'll, we'll see some major projects every single year.
Okay, Jenny, would you take the role?
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 10D? This is the Peerless Networks Phone Services.
This contract will save us money. We needed to wait until we had the switches and servers replaced as our phone system runs through the computerized system, which is why our two central network hubs are at Main East and Main South. Build in redundancy because those network rooms can, can switch on and off if one has a power failure.
Any questions? We've discussed this a couple of times now. Okay. Jenny, would you take the role?
Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Hey, could I have a motion on item 11? This is new course proposals.
Second.
Sean?
So we have two new course proposals. AP Seminar and Emergency Medical Responder. AP Seminar is an English course that'll give a third option in our English department for an advanced placement course for them, for a student to take. It's also very much student-centered in that the research topics actually come from the students. There's a major resource element, or I'm sorry, a segment of that course, which any student who is heading into post-secondary work can truly benefit from. So it's a little bit more open-ended for students, which we like. And hopefully will be a third option for students who are, you know, really looking to pursue a career that includes research or, I don't know, the English major, but anything, communication, marketing, things like that. Emergency Medical Responder. So this is not an emergency medical technician, so just to be clear. What I learned is there's actually steps along the way. Responder is the first step, which enables us to get students onboard. And this can cover any student who was looking for a career in any kind of medical field. So our student today may have been someone who actually would have taken this course because it's very practical. We're looking to get students out on an ambulance to kind of ride along with an EMT to understand what that looks like, plus the coursework. The nice part about this too is we're partnering with Superior Ambulance, and they are going to provide the trainers. So zero cost or education needed for our staff. So this will be someone who, much like we do with the Certified Nurses Assistant, has somebody with a specific expertise who will then teach the students, prepare them for the exam. So this is something they can walk right out the door and start doing.
Do we have a contract then with Superior?
We don't have anything yet. There will be an MOU. So this isn't coming onboard until spring of '25. So between now and hopefully August, we'll have an MOU worked out.
Then would we, would we pay them?
No, they, the, the ambulance industry is in dire need of people to be EMTs, EMRs. So this is all on their dime. So we'll take advantage of it while that lasts.
Just so I understand, the, the course itself, is it, is there a classroom?
Yes, so they would, they would come out to campus to teach the courses.
Okay, okay.
Along with this new course proposals, even though it doesn't fit into the study, not yet, but just curiosity, how the Asian-American immigrant histories that was signed by Governor about eight and a half ago and our Jennifer Gold Gertrude kind of cool sign that proposed it and so on, Governor mandated that, so all the districts, State of Illinois kind of teaches it. How that work out?
That's an additional resource. So when you talk about textbooks, they're really geared towards the largest states with the highest number of students. Because at the end of the day, it's about making the most profit. Each state has different mandates, so there are any number of mandates, particularly in social science, that we use supplemental materials. So that might be, you know, the Asian-American History Museum and using some of their materials. But it's built into the curriculum as, as I mentioned earlier, it's a state mandated curriculum.
So eventually, when time comes, that will be, there will be.
That time's here. So we supplement that now. So as various different parts of American history are studied, that's when we bring in the contributions of Asian-American.
Okay. I just had one other question on the AP class. Isn't anticipated that that could be, it's not like a sequence, like you need to do the other APs. Someone could just do this particular AP.
Absolutely, yeah. Actually, with the three, I kind of think if there's any sequential, I don't think there are any sequential APs. Because it used to be.
Seminar, it goes seminar and then capstone?
But they redid that. You can do either, right?
Okay.
I wouldn't do capstone without seminar.
Right.
But you, you don't have to take.
So on that, there's, so there's not necessarily an exam? It's like the finished product is the exam?
It is. So this is a unique, that particular, Dr. McMahon, being an English teacher, that particular AP is pretty different than the others in terms of, there's a more openness to the product. And so it's more, it's not a portfolio, but you are submitting. And then teachers are trained into how to grade that, which is a very different approach than most of the others.
But I appreciate that approach because it does help tap into like the interests and kind of the unique areas that students want to be in. I think that's great. And it gives another option outside of any.
Right. And the seminar actually aligns very well with our competency-based approach in English. It's what might be the only one. But this one really does well, fits well.
It's not, it's in English, but it doesn't have to be an English-related topic. If you were really interested in biochemistry, you could do a biochemistry research project. It's about how it's written, how it's communicated, what standards for citations and so on.
That, that's very interesting. I mean, that's good. Students need to know that so that they, you know, if they have those kinds of interests, that's great. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Jenny, would you take the role on item 11?
Iker?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 12, which is the Advocate Adult Down Syndrome Center, 5K run, 3K funwa.
So moved.
Dr. Pike, move.
We appreciate any opportunity to collaborate with Advocate. This is a great event that we don't anticipate, you know, conflicting with anything that would be going on at Main East. And the Adult Down Syndrome Center is located at the location right next to us at Main East.
What was the turnout, number wise?
I'm not sure. I've never seen the event myself, Jin, but I've heard it's great. I shouldn't say it's great, but I've heard it's a great event. I, I don't know, but we'll see this year.
Okay. Jenny, would you take the role on that?
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay. Calendar items noted here. Are there any other communications or public comments at this time? If not, you're with me on this. Could I have a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of student personnel under the Open Meetings Act, Sections 2C9 and 2C10, review of closed session minutes from the Board of Education, review of closed session minutes, appointment, employment compensation and discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees under Section 2C1, probable in the appendique, well, help describe that, sorry. And security procedures, school building safety and security and the use of personal equipment to respond to an actual or threatened or reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff or public property under Section 2C8 of the Open Meetings Act.
So moved.
Second.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee? Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Going to closed session. Could I have a motion to return to open session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Jenny? Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 17, A through, A through F as appended? There is an appendage to it.
Second.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 19, approval of closed session minutes for February 5th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Abstain.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone.